Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2023 deliberative session of the Jaffrey Ridge Cooperative School District, SAU 47. I'm Bob Shawman. I'm your friendly school district moderator. Before we begin, I'd like to take just a second to thank all of you for coming tonight. We begin with the presentation of the American flag, Boy Scout Troops 308 from Ridge. You'll see several gentlemen coming down, Aaron Graham, Logan LeBrecq, Philip Knight, Marcus Cementa, John Cementa, Yester related, Kyle Pelini. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Call guard attention. Oh. Will the audience please rise and kindly remove your hats? Call guard attention. Call guard advance. Call guard salute. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Like to introduce Jayden Bryan, a sophomore at Conan High School, who will sing for you the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the brave? And the home of the brave?
Thank you, Jayden Bryan. Now Jayden's going to leave us now to go home and do homework. Let me begin by introducing the superintendent of schools, Ruben Duncan. And we'll do that in just one second.
Testing. Okay. Call guard attention. Call guard, prepare to post the colors. Call guard, post the colors. Call guard retreat. Call guard dismissed.
Thank you, Kyle Pelini. Okay, like to introduce superintendent schools, Ruben Duncan for opening remarks and introduction of the members of the tables to my left and right. Before Ruben speaks, I'd like to acknowledge that Superintendent Duncan, on his selection as Superintendent of the Year 2023 by the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, he'll be recognized at the AASA National Convention or Conference on Education next week at their annual meeting in San Antonio, Texas. Ruben?
Thank you for that introduction. I, before I introduce everyone who is up here tonight, I was able to take some time over the past couple of weeks to read actually the nomination letters that some staff members and community members had put forward through the application process. And there were three themes that came out of those letters. And it was that our staff here in Jaffrey and in Ridge are doing amazing things for our kids and for our community. And they're innovative, collaborative, and they are continuing to want to and continuously wanting to improve our overall community as and specifically, of course, our schools and the education for our children. Second theme was that our children are doing great things and they're involved in more and more activities. And we want to make sure that it continues to take place. And we're promoting that certainly. Our activities director tonight unfortunately can't be with us because she's at a basketball game over at the Pratt's. And we might have another player who gets 1,000 points. That would be two if that happens tonight for this year. And that's really neat. That's an aside. The third theme is that the community has supported over these last several years, the efforts that we've put forth to improve our educational process. Many of our facilities needs that we've had to fix and improve. One of which, for instance, is the parking lot out there with the lights, improving the lights, improving the parking. It's certainly great during voting day when I come over here to see how things are going. And there's room for people to actually park and it's safe. And so we're making, as the, the community is doing what it can to improve our facilities. It's doing what it can to support our community. And tonight, before again, I introduce, if we go to that first slide, I'm changing the order of here, how I was going to mention this, but next slide. And yep. Tonight is really, yes, it's about the deliberative session. You get the opportunity to discuss the budget, discuss the facilities, discuss other warrant articles. We'll have a collective bargaining agreement that we'll talk about. But tonight is about our community, our desire to collaborate and communicate and to bolster each and every one of those areas. And in that center is the lens by which we want to really want to accomplish everything that we have set forth to do. And that means when we say community, that yes, that means of the internal community, that means each and every one of you here. And that starts with each and every one of you here coming here. And I really appreciate you being here tonight. And furthermore, when we talk about communication, collaboration, community, and I can see that one of those circles doesn't show up well up there. It's not about simply supporting or simply adding input. It's not about just giving ideas. This is the first slide that really talks about our newly adopted multi-year plan. You can find out on our website underneath important documents. If we go to the next slide, part of that document, you'll see some more specific goals and then it gets a little more granular. I encourage you to take a look at that again on our website underneath important documents. And if we go to the next slide, such a significant part of our planning. And what I mean by it's not just about giving input or sharing ideas or trying to convince people to do something to improve an organization. This is a traditional hierarchy model of organizational leadership, I guess you could say. This is the type of model that most organizations like schools or sometimes communities have where you have one or two or a group of people at the top making decisions and then pushing those decisions down all the way. In the past, that certainly has been the case and that would be normal. But that's not what we want to do and it's not how we're going to achieve greatness for our kids in our communities. Over the past two years, three years, and for the foreseeable future, we continue to want to make sure that the power, that the decision-making, that the creativity, that the innovation takes place by those who are with the kids on a regular basis. Our teachers, their administrators, the teams. My role in this, our role in this would be to help provide the resources for those individuals to be able to do the job that they need to do and know best to do. And then we have these elements of partners. That's where everyone here comes in. Everyone here can be a community partner, not just someone who goes to a voting booth. That's important. And we appreciate that. But a partner in really coming in and joining committees, a partner in coming in and into our schools and seeing how things are, a partner in and advocating on a regular basis for our kids. A partner in maybe reading a book in a classroom. Whether it be partners, could be organization, local organizations, local businesses, it could be local churches, it could be anyone who's in our community coming together to co-create, co-design, co-implement our best future selves. And so I invite each and every one of you tonight. And we'll be continuing to do so over the next year, two years and beyond to join and work together to improve our schools and to improve our community. Now, people who are dedicated, super dedicated individuals who many of you have been on this board for a long period of time. And I can tell you with the number of meetings that we have and the hours that are spent, this is extraordinary dedication. I want to introduce these individuals to you tonight. To my right, your left, we have first over here from Jaffrey, John McCarthy, School Board Chair. We have next to him Charlie Iker, the Vice Chair. He's from Ridge. We then have Christine Pressman from Jaffrey, School Board Member. We have Daisy Hawk, School Board Member from Jaffrey. We have Forbes Farmer, School Board Member from Ridge. And we have Lisa Wiley, School Board Member from Ridge. We do have not with us tonight, Kim Acoin, also from Ridge. She is at the at-large position, School Board Member. She was unable to attend, but she does wish she could have been here and be part of this meeting tonight. And then over to my left over here, we have Attorney Gordon Graham, who is with us here tonight. And he's here just to answer any questions, some difficult questions that may arise. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't, but we're always happy to have Gordon with us. And then we have our Chief Financial Officer, Kerry Broderick. We have Jennifer Horn, our Director of Student Services. And we have John LeClaire, our Director of Facilities. And so many of the individuals up here, all of them, the individuals up here may at times speak if the question really pertains more to their expertise. Again, thank you so much for being here. It means a lot to myself. It means a lot to this group right here. It means a lot to our children.
Thank you, Ruben. Couple of other quick introductions. Our district clerk is Leslie McLean. She's right up front here. And I'd like to recognize for a moment the Budget Advisory Committee for SAU 47, which includes Rin's, Rin's Carl Pruder and Laurel McKenzie from Jaffrey. You may recall Laurel was former Chair of the School Board. So I thank those two good folks for their help. Couple of quick housekeeping chores before we get to the meat of the meeting. No smoking, as you can appreciate, is allowed in the building. The restrooms are located to the left and the right as you come in the back doors. Fire exits are located right there to my left, your right, or out the back. We have five warrant articles this evening, the first of which is the proposed operating budget. As our cooperative school district deliberative session is governed by the passage of Senate Bill Two, we shall vote in the two towns of Jaffrey and Ridge via paper ballot on the warrant as we agree to the wording and or dollar figures this evening. And that election will occur on Tuesday, March the 14th in our respective towns. Voters tonight at our deliberative session under Senate Bill Two rules are empowered to do the following. As we read the warrant article, you may approve the original wording of the warrant article as presented. Original warrant article wording would, if approved by this voting body, would be placed on the March 14th official ballot that will be voted on by the citizens in both the towns of Jaffrey and Ridge. Second thing, you may amend the original wording or the dollar amounts of the original warrant article as read. Amendments require a simple majority and may be made from the floor, specifically from the microphone, which is right up front there. A second to the motion to amend the main motion is necessary. And after discussion, we'll take a vote on the amendment and if it passes, the amended warrant article would be placed on the March 14th official ballot. Any amendment to the main motion should be presented in writing so we can make sure we have an accurate accurate set of words. In the past eight years, during which I've been privileged to serve as your district moderator for the school, we've utilized a few simple rules for the discussion that I'll share. I'll then ask for your support for these rules so that the meeting may move forward in an orderly fashion. We have a microphone in the front there. And I would ask that anybody wishes to ask questions, who wishes to speak for or against a warrant article or who wishes to propose an amendment or call the question, which simply says, we will stop discussion and debate and move forward from that point. When you wish to speak, please first state your name and your address so we know who you are and from which town and which you live. The chair asks that as others may wish to speak, that each voter limit their comments to three minutes. This should be ample opportunity for you to make your point, ask questions so that others in line at the mic may speak. A voter may speak a second time, but only after there's no one at the microphone and everyone who has not spoken already for the first time has had an opportunity to do so. Should there be a motion to call the question, which means you literally want to stop discussion and debate and move forward? That called a question will be recognized only if there's still at the microphone, have an opportunity to speak first. So once the motion is made to call the question, please do not come up to the microphone because at that point we will then vote to end discussion. No amendments to amendments. Each amendment will be discussed and then voted upon. Should another amendment then be moved? That's fine. But all amendments should be presented to moderator, as I said, in writing. So we have a record of the exact wording that the voter wishes to propose for their amendment. To prevent any possibility of what I will call the 11th hour run, the moderator will recognize a motion to restrict reconsideration. Now, what that means is when we agree on the wording and we move on to the next warrant article, this prevents somebody at the 11th hour from saying, I'd like to move that we reconsider warrant article, umpty dump. And then you vote on it and you may find that what you thought you had approved has been changed. That's not fair. So I will accept the motion to restrict reconsideration. And that means should anybody wish to do that, we would have to have another meeting, which would require at least a week's warning. Last but not least, in these proposed rules, I would ask for your approval. Those in favor, simply hold up your hands and say aye. Not opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Okay. Moving on, let's get to the meat of the meeting, warrant article two. Warrant article two reads as follows, and you should have it there in your, in your information. Shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the, on the budget posted with the warrant was amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $30,382,733. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $29,798,761, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school district or by law, where the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Section 10 and 16 to take up the issue of the revised operating budget. Ruben, I believe you're going to be talking to the warrant article. Is that correct? Okay, you have the microphones here.
Thank you. So I'm going to be just giving a little bit of an overview. This first slide right here is simply a chart that is another way of explaining what that warrant article is. So you have all those words from before. Here's a little chart. It tells you a little more information from what was going on last year to this year, what the percent increase means. It's important to note that this year that we are operating on is a default budget. And so as we've had a couple of years of inflation, things have have increased, prices have increased in almost every single area. And so it's a bigger jump than we would normally see. Going to the next slide, this kind of, this shows, I believe, that jump. And so this is about a 10-year look at our budgets. So we've been very good as a district. I think we've worked really hard. Matter of fact, I know we've worked very hard over the past seven to eight years to, to look at our expenses, to look at how we do business just in general, to be able to keep our overall costs fairly consistent. And we've been very successful that way. And we've had many years of, sometimes we've had low increases, sometimes we've had situations where taxes have been reduced. And then, you know, we had a pandemic and then with all that happens as a result of that. And then these last couple of years have certainly added to expenses, many of which we had to absorb within a budget. When, you know, just all of a sudden with no, no warning whatsoever. But you can see that over those last two years, that's where there was a increase. And so we're proposing that increase this year. Over the years, if we look at our cost per pupil, though certainly over the last couple of years, we've had some rising costs. We have managed to still stay beneath the rising the rising costs throughout the state of New Hampshire. And so this is a graph we feel is respectful of our communities around us. If we were to take the communities around us and average out where they are at, and then the state, of course, is that middle graph, and then we are that last graph that this year. You can see that we are consistently be spending below the state average in cost per pupil. Now, depending how you view that graph, it could be a very good thing, or it could be, you know, there are individuals who have come and talked with me and said, you know, I'd really like to at least be at that state average. But that's a conversation that we can have going into the future with everyone when we talk about not just adding value, but getting on committees and working together and creating. We can, we can have these conversations in real time about how we can as a community provide for our, our school. And sometimes not necessarily by taxation. This next slide just shows a, this is a simple pie graph of where the money goes. 71% goes to staffing as that is the primary cost of the school or of running a school system. 29% goes to everything else. Now, that could be supplies, it could be extracurricular activities, it could be equipment, it's facilities is a large portion of that certainly. And this is actually a change because typically we're about 80% staffing or 75% staffing, I think is the lowest we've had since I've been here. But because of inflation, everything else has increased significantly during this timeframe. And so you can see that that's a nice picture of kind of how the, how the costs are changing. And those costs that 29% represent a lot of, we have to, we have to spend money to keep things updated, to keep things going, to make sure we have the proper supplies and so forth and equipment for our children for their best learning experience. This next graph shows staffing over those years, so eight or so years. I don't know if you can see this. It's a tough one. But basically it says that we've maintained staffing numbers throughout all that time. We have reduced in our, as the student population has decreased, we've also decreased in our teacher population during that timeframe. Certainly last year because of a default budget that came in, we had to remove seven positions. Because of that model we showed earlier about that ecosystem organizational chart as opposed to a top-down chart. We had a school that was able to reorganize itself very quickly and be able to make sure that we did not have anyone lose jobs. But by attrition, we were able to handle those seven staffing cuts. That being said, we have more needs than, since the pandemic especially, than what we've had social emotionally and we need to provide support. Some academic needs that we've had to certainly increase as well. So we do have an increase in support staff during that timeframe, which has leveled out as our professional staff has decreased. We've also really in line increased our support staff too. Simply a few notable changes to, from last year's budget to this year's budget. And there are more, but these I think are more big ticket items. Facilities, and I've put down next to it that what's in the default, what's included in the default and what's not included in default. So you'll see the proposed next to it. The default increases by 183,000 this year in facilities because of because of spending that needs to take place to make sure that we have a school that operates and by law. And then there are 150,000 more proposed and that's by and large in the area of making some small improvements in different areas. One area of equipment to be able to do a lot of the cleaning, some other cleaning funds that we need to make sure that we're maintaining the cleanliness and the health of our school. And then the, probably the bulk of that is in repair and maintenance. We have found that repair and maintenance that covers, you know, it's, it's increased simply because everything has gone up with inflation. Student transportation has gone up. A lot of that we're able to, because of really reviewing the laws, we're able to include that into the default budget. There are some other costs that include transportation, fuel, food service that cannot be put into the default budget that the SAU has another about equalling the same amount, 162,000, that would be in the proposed. Health insurance increased by 3.1%. And while that's overall is about $92,000, we can also say that because of some really great negotiations with the teacher support and support staff unions as well with a school board years ago, we've been able to negotiate really good plans that provide our, our employees with fantastic coverage, but also in a way our employees with fantastic coverage, but also in a way that has resulted in us not having large, large increases year after year after year, where some other plans are more volatile to that. And we are, again, for the, uh, second or third year in a row, on the very lowest end of increases in the pools that are around us in these areas. Um, other salaries, these are salaries, all other employees in the district that aren't on, um, a collective bargaining agreement, like our support staff or our teachers association, would be an increase of a hundred forty thousand. Food service. Um, some of that can go into default. Um, and then about another half of that, or the other side of that, a hundred thousand plus, um, is needed. Food and everything associated with food is going up. We are also, just as a side note that's related to that, we are in a year right now, we're in a process right now where we're going out to bid for food service, and we're looking at all options. Because certainly we want not just to make sure that we're functioning economically well, but also we're providing healthy um, meals and in a way that's really promoting health and wellness for our kids. Technology, uh, the overall increase that would be in the proposed would be thirty-six thousand. That's as a result of needing to replace equipment. And then special education, we were able to put the million-dollar increase into default. Um, basically, again, because of uh, inflation, uh, New Hampshire and Massachusetts out of district placements over the last two years have in- increased their tuition rates, twelve to fourteen percent. If you have, uh, out of districts that requires residency in New Hampshire without notice, last year we had, it was a two-hundred percent increase. Uh, so we've had to, whether we've had an increase, um, in needs, the needs that we had increased. And because they have to pay their salaries, they have to pay their bills, everything. So as inflation goes to the people we're contracting with that gets passed down to us. And then forty-three thousand is proposed, and that forty-three thousand really talks about, there are some trends that we're seeing. And we'd like to institute some new programming within our elementary schools to be able to do two things. Um, one, first and foremost, pro- provide a great education for some learners who are having more struggles and be able to keep them in our community. That's really important. Again, community collaboration and communication, keeping those kids here, we care about them, we want them here. But we have to have the personnel, we have to have the resources, we have to have the spaces, and we have to have the state approval to be able to do that. We have figured out a way for, with about forty-three, forty thousand or so, to be able to start that process. And as a result, the second part of that is, as a result, we are, um, trying to plan to make sure that we are able to keep our learners here and not have to send them to these, uh, very expensive out-of-district placements. If they're a day program, you're paying for the placement, you're paying for the services, and you're paying for the transportation. Uh, we don't have many residential places, but certainly if we ever have a residential placement, whether it be moving in, um, or whether we need to, um, help, help a, a child, because that's what they need, and they need the therapy and supports and so forth. Um, you know, those, those certainly are a lot more costly. This next slide is a slide that just summarizes default budget. It's the prior year's adopted budget. There are some reductions or increases, in this case, we're on the increases of one point eight million. And then there are no, this time, um, no one-time appropriations. Inside the default budget that we didn't discuss, um, we do have a couple CBAs, the JRSSA CBA, that will be in the second year of that. We have, um, some, uh, minor increases with the JRSSA, but we'll talk about that later on down in another warrant. Uh, we talked about health insurance, utilities, placements. And then we do have some savings in personnel, where it comes to New Hampshire retirement. Um, we did have some decrease in personnel last year, so that decrease is still within our budget. We are not putting forth, you know, new positions, except for that one that I talked about with that, uh, special education, um, model that we like to start to implement. Um, and so there are, uh, uh, there is a minor decrease there. And that makes up the information for this warrant article.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to, uh, ask anyone who has a question, who'd like to discuss what you've heard, wishes to offer an amendment to please approach the microphone. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Uh, Mark Tigray, Team Burley, Court in Jeffrey. Bob, this is a question. Under SB two, does a article have to be, uh, moved and seconded before discussion?
I don't believe that's the case, is that correct? Legal counsel says no.
So the answer is no. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mark. Should have known that was coming. Mark is our, uh, town moderator in Jeffrey. Okay, anybody else who wishes to speak? If not, I sense you're comfortable. Oops, I see a gentleman coming up.
Dan Whitney, Ringe, move to restrict reconsideration of article two.
Well, at this point, Dan, I hear the motion to restrict reconsideration, but at this point, I see nobody else wishing to come to the microphone. So that being the case, I sense you're very comfortable with the wording of one article one, or rather one article two, excuse me, as read and is reviewed by our superintendent schools. So I will instruct the school district clerk, Leslie McLean, to ensure that the warrant article two goes on the ballot as you have agreed this evening. And Dan, I hear a motion to restrict reconsideration. Thank you, Dan. Is there a second to that? Okay, and your name, please? Owen, okay, I didn't recognize you with your mask on, the Lone Ranger. Okay. All those in favor restricting reconsideration of warrant article number two, please signify so by saying aye. And opposed? One article two, you've restricted reconsideration, so moved. Warrant article three. Shall the school district vote to ratify the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Jeffrey Ringe Cooperative School District and the Jeffrey Ringe Support Staff Association, which modifies the final year of the existing agreement and extends it an additional two years, and calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits to the amount previously approved by voters at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. And over the fiscal year twenty, twenty-three to twenty-four, the estimated increase is one hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars. For the fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, the estimated increase is one hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars. And the fiscal year twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, the estimated increase is two hundred and two thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars. And to further raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, such sum representing the additional cost attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. Recognize Ruben Duncan?
I love this article. To me, uh, we have, as a community, as the superintendent schools, we need to thank the individuals who are covered by this collective bargaining agreement for all the hard work that they do day in and day out. Uh, the work that they did through the pandemic over those two years, the work that they're doing right now to keep our buildings clean, to work with our uh, most vulnerable children, the work that they do to support the educational process, giving that extra boost for those individuals who either need more because they need to be challenged further, or some who haven't learned the material yet and need to get that extra boost in that way. Individuals who are maintaining our facilities, who are maintaining our techno- uh, technology infrastructure and improving that. These individuals work hard every day. Absolutely, this school district could not function without these dedicated extraordinary employees. And I say that because if you were to meet with them and talk to them, I believe you would walk away and say as well, these are extraordinary individuals. Extraordinary people. Extraordinary community members, and they love our children. This was a long negotiation this year, but a really good one. And it was long, not because we had animosity toward one another, um, we've been building trust for years. But because we really wanted to make certain that we were developing something that was respectful to the work that they do day in and day out, and again, to look toward the future. So there are a few things that are minor, if we go to the next slide. We want to make sure that we're referring to individuals with respect. Changing the names clerical aides to secretaries, secretaries to administrative assistants, and our instructional associates to paraeducators. Um, another benefit to the term paraeducators is that that is a terminol- that's terminology that is known throughout the region and throughout the state. And so that when we put these positions out to be hired, people will understand what that means. Retirement benefits. We have had a very traditional, um, what's very typical in a lot of collective bargaining agreements, uh, basically if you have in the past, uh, been able to ha- uh, add up all your sick days and accumulate them year after year, and you've had kind of what, I guess you would say, like, like a perfect attendance type of situation. When you retire from the district, you'd be able to get a percentage back depending on the number of years. And so one lump sum. But through our observation of this process over several years, many, um, do not get perhaps what they deserve. Many find themselves, um, having to use the sick time, even though they've accumulated it, and so they're not able to get that retirement benefit. And it's not for everybody. And so we want to make sure that we are supporting everybody. And that every year that they come in here and do their work, and every day they come in counts. And so we've begun a, um, we, we have, just like all our employees have New Hampshire retirement, and the New Hampshire retirement system is is somewhat vulnerable, um, at, and, uh, through the years it has changed. Uh, we want to give our staff a little more security, um, not, it's not in huge numbers, but be able to put consistent four oh three B composite, uh, contributions into each individual who sets up a four oh three B so that over the years, they are planning for their future. Other benefits, we've added two more additional holidays for school year employees. Um, a couple of years ago, I think they were at zero, didn't have any holidays, and we were able to get one in there, and now we're at that three um, holidays, and that's really important. And it's important also to take care, I mean, it, one is a nice benefit, but it's important to know that, um, this category of employee is paid hourly, and during those school vacation times, they're, they're not getting paid. And so a lot of those vacation times do have holidays within there, and this helps bridge that, that gap from a practical standpoint. Pants, that sounds kind of simple, it matters. So we have custodians and we have maintenance workers, we provide shirts already, they have their names on, it's awesome. There's, there's a sense of community, there's a sense of, uh, belonging, uh, but, you know, there are a lot of expenses. We, I mean, we have them, um, you know, it, pants, it's important, we're going to provide the, that, that uniform. I think maybe shorts for one person, I think that was what was said. And the pay scale, we, um, we've been fortunate that we've been able to be semi-competitive in the region with this pay scale as it comes to school districts. Um, we are anything but competitive when it comes to the job market at this current time. And so, um, there are two things, one, we don't believe it takes eighteen years or more to, for a person to acquire the skills to be really a fantastic, like, top of the notch, like, I understand everything, I'm taking care of everything type of employee, um, where they can be training other people and so forth. And so changing the model from an eighteen-step model to a ten-step model is a big change. And it helps modernize this contract along with the four oh three B contributions. And then equal step increments. Um, that's may sound weird, but we have not been equitable. And often that is the case within, um, different organizations. We don't want that, it's not right. Um, and so you'll see in this, if you were to compare what we have right now on our website to what we are going to show you in a couple of seconds here, uh, you'll see that there would be a, a ninety cent pay increment, then a ninety-five cent the next year. It's the top up spot there, ninety-five cents between each step with everyone, and then up to a dollar in that third year between each step. Uh, currently, we have some getting fifty cents, some getting forty-five cents, some getting twenty-five or thirty-five cents, depending on job classification. And we don't believe that that's, um, one, it's not what the market is asking for. And two, it's not what we should be doing to, um, be respectful to our employees. This, right here, we, we were very, very, um, grateful last year. Uh, I know that there was a motion from the floor to raise the base rates. They were saying that we were still too low, that we, we needed to be more aggressive with that. I appreciate those individuals who made those statements, it wa- it wasn't the time for, um, we couldn't, we couldn't change it because it was a negotiated situation. Uh, we have taken feedback from community members, uh, who have, you know, expressed that, those statements. We've also seen, certainly looked at the job market, and through these few years, we believe we get these categories to a competitive space where we can hire and we can retain quality employees who are doing their best for our physical plants as well as the lives of our children. And that's what I have.
Invite anyone who has a question or would like to, um, discuss or wishes to amend for any reason? Do you step up the microphone in the center? Seeing that one approaching the mic, I sense you're comfortable with the wording of warrant article three as I read. I'll therefore instruct, uh, Leslie McLean, our district, school district clerk, to ensure that wording appears on the ballot. I'll accept the motion to re-constrict reconsideration. That voice sounds familiar, would that be you, Dan? Thank you. And is there a second to that? Owen, I recognize you through the voice. Mark Teager. Sorry, Mark. Okay, all those in favor restricting reconsideration, warrant article three, signify so by saying aye. And opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Warrant article four. Very simple. Shall the school district, if article three is defeated, that would be at the polls, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address article three cost items only?
So this does what it says. Uh, it authorizes us to call a special meeting to address the article three matter if it were not to pass. CBA.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, I say, I sense you're comfortable with the wording of article four, and shall ask Leslie to ensure that it appears in the district ballot, just as it's worded here. Warrant article five. Shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars to be placed in the SAU forty-seven building maintenance to be placed in the S A U forty-seven Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund established in nineteen ninety, created for the reconstruction and repair of real estate, buildings, and capital equipment?
So we've had a lot of success over the past two years with building some or re- reconstructing some areas and also adding on to some critical areas that we've needed to improve for quite some time. And so as I talk, I'll be talking a little bit about some of the items that are coming up that would be paid out of this if this were to be funded. Uh, these are needs. Uh, most of them are not extraordinarily exciting, but these are facilities that are on the older side of things that we want to maintain. We have had some engineers come in and look at our facilities and their structures, and they believe that these structures are good and that we can continue to, you know, certainly keep them strong and make them better, both aesthetically as well as structurally and mechanically speaking. So a lot of work I have to credit John Leclerc. Um, this is John's last year with us this year. But if you get an opportunity, I think we have a draft version of the, um, the annual report back there. And if you take the time to read what this department has done over the past two years, it's amazing. It is by far, uh, more than my time here and certainly historically speaking for quite some time. Uh, so that, that's also been as a result of your support. And so we appreciate that. So thank you, John. The anticipated expenditures for this year and next year. So we have some money inside the current fund, but it is those first two items is what is really left within that area. We have actually finished the RMS, this school, um, exterior ramp over, um, for safety reasons and, uh, really quite, quite honestly, um, for the preschool area over there, making sure it's ADA accessible. And then, uh, we have some HVAC work that needs to happen within our construction trades area over at the high school. And so that, depending on whether, uh, we are able to get that work done now, it's, or whether it's in the summer, depends on which fiscal year it will come out, but it will still come out of basically the same fund, uh, leaving us with very little. Uh, we do have currently a situation right now having to do with pipes and so forth that we're working on. We may need to use some funds. So you'll see that those bottom one, two, three, four, five, six bullet points add up to about three hundred seventy-five thousand, not to four hundred thousand. Uh, but we do have a little bit of a buffer for these extra emergency needs that are over and above what we would expect for emergencies even in our budget. And, uh, we continue to have some difficulties with our drainage in certain areas due to, well, as an example, um, we had, I guess it was two thousand and seven, there was some construction done at uh, the middle school area, middle school, high school area. Um, a sewage line was put through underneath the Pratt and it broke through several of the clay pipes that were drainage from the roof. And so water pools as opposed to draining in the appropriate way. So we're working on that. John's doing an amazing job. The people who are working in our community who are working on that are doing a great job, but it is an expense for certain and not an easy one to fix. Uh, so those are the types of things that come up and have been coming up, but they're older buildings and that's to be expected. Uh, we have doors that need to be replaced, uh, both at J R M S and J G S and their courtyards. Um, we've, that actually, um, we have made some progress in those areas. Uh, C H S exterior door replacement, J R M S and J G S flooring, we have to, you know, um, depending what we get back for prices with bids, you know, we'll try to do more. C H S flooring, RMS flooring, a lot of this is removing carpet, carpet that that, uh, breeds allergens, that keeps, it's, it's, it's not the healthiest environment, harder to clean as well, replacing it with more tile. And then the J G S courtyard paving, that's a necessity, that's a safety matter, and that needs to be done. Um, there are some trip hazards there. And so, um, certainly J G S, when we come to paving, that parking lot is something that we need to address down the road. We had had a warrant a couple of years or several years ago. Um, it did not pass, but the needs are still there. And so, um, in order to know kind of how long and when we're going to be doing that, the board and the administration for several years have been working on some multi-year planning. We've had an engineering group, the Turner Corporation come out and give us a, a plan mostly having to do with, um, just maintaining and, and keeping things running well, like the HVAC systems and so forth. And so if we go to the next slide, you'll see a picture of, um, this would be what it would look like if you were looking at the, the spreadsheet, the digital spreadsheet, you'd have all the schools over to your your left. The amounts of money each year that we'd be ideally looking for, that's what's still under conversation. Um, down below, you have the tabs that you can just click on to each and every location, and then it would drop down menus. I'll show you what an example of that would look like. You can see that there are categories of funding, so it could be maintenance trust fund, M T F. It could be grant-funded G, general fund, G F. Um, warrant article, lease bond, that type of, you know, borrowing basically, um, would be another category. We do have a committee, when I say, you know, get involved, we have a committee right now working on, um, planning out athletic fields, athletic complexes and so forth, what it is we can do. A lot of conversation about, hey, can we do things without raising taxes? Can we, can we fundraise? Can we look for grants? Can we do that? So there's an active conversation about that so that we don't have to put this in the general fund or, or do bonds and things of that nature to improve our field so they're safe and so forth. So there's, um, funding, funding, uh, locations. And then this next one is just, you know, the draft at C H S, what it would look like, and it has, most of them have flooring, they have HVAC. Uh, a notable area up, I think it's at the very top of these last two slides that I had was HVAC. And again, the great work done. Thank you, John. The ESSER funds that we received. Um, you can go online, you can find out how every school district has spent their ESSER funds. Our district spent it in a very different way to most people. We were able to take three point five million roughly and three to three point five million and work on replacing and up, uh, uh, all of the HVAC system in this school, Jaffrey Grade School, upgrade the electrical in this school and in Jaffrey Grade School, do a few, a few other areas, um, things with the glycol and so forth. And by bringing that company in, because we had a good relationship with that company and they're still working on it and they'll probably be done maybe in the summertime. Um, we were able to then thank you again to the community, pass a lease last year, which saves this district and, and the community, probably at this point, a couple of million dollars with inflation, the way it's gone, because even after it was passed, we had to, um, work on making sure that we were in the number that we had agreed upon. And so, uh, cause prices were going up very quickly. And so that work is being done, uh, enormous work over at the middle high school right now. Uh, great infrastructure that hasn't existed before is going in there and that work will be done as well. And so, so much of this plan, actually all the HVAC system will be good for another twenty to, you know, or more years. Certainly, they, they feel that twenty is, is life expectancy, but it could be more as well, and they're better systems and the infrastructure is there the next time we have to replace something. Again, this is in draft, the com- the committee, the facilities committee has a lot more to, um, to do, to look at this, to plan when this, before this would go public. Um, but we will be in the months to come, push, pushing this information out and making what I would say is a, a flexible document, because sometimes we'll be able to find grant funds, like what we're doing right now with a bunch of safety upgrades, that we were able to get, um, several hundred thousand dollars in grants to do that. Uh, when those, uh, when those opportunities arise, we want to take them and that would change when and what gets done within this type of plan.
Okay. At this point, any discussion from the floor? Questions, amendments? Seeing none, I sense you're comfortable with the wording of Article Five. Leslie, you know what you need to do. Our final Warren Article, Warren Article Six. Shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the expendable trust fund established in two thousand and five, known as the Special Education Contingency Fund, created for the purpose of building a reserve for unanticipated special education costs with such amount to be funded from the June thirtieth fund balance available for transfer on July first. Ruben?
So you saw some of the increases earlier. So I'm not going to spend some time talking about that. Uh, over this past year, we have had to actually, for the first time, um, dip into that trust fund. We were very fortunate to have that, that helped us go get through last year. Um, again, thank you for your support in previous years. Uh, this is a hundred fifty thousand to both, um, kind of put, put money back in for what we had spent, but also trying to get ahead a little bit because costs are increasing. And I would say, I think an important point is the special ed and student services department has worked really hard in the last two years to go after more revenue. And, uh, Medicaid, because, um, we, there were a lot of changes within the state around Medicaid and they've, they've, um, implemented a system now that is really working well again in, because of the work ethic of all of our employees, because it, it takes a many, many people to, to bill Medicaid properly for the services. And I can say that halfway through the year, we've received a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue in Medicaid. For the entire year, we budgeted that we would likely get a hundred fifty thousand. So we do anticipate that we're going to get probable, at, at least, I would say, the rate we're going at least another hundred thousand. It could be a lot more, it could be another hundred fifty thousand. Um, by the time the year's ends anyway, and that money we can't touch. And so that might be very likely the hundred fifty thousand we're talking about if we, you know, have that, uh, after the year's end.
Discussion on Warren Article Six. Seeing none, I will instruct the wonderful Leslie McLean to ensure that's on the warrant article, the ballot as you have approved it tonight. Uh, I was remiss in accepting a motion to restrict reconsideration on Warren Article Five. I'll do it right now, both Warren Article Five and Warren Article Six. Is there a motion to that effect? Dan, your melodious voice is wonderful. Well, well, it's gonna be either Mark Houghton or Owen Tiger. Okay, with a second to be made, all those in favor restricting reconsideration signify so by saying aye? And opposed? I have it. We restrict the reconsideration. Three quick comments. Number one, or two rather, want to recognize both Leslie McLean up front and Nick Handy. Nick is our school district secretary and communications specialist. They're the ones that have been jostling around with the microphones and making sure you can see what's up on the screen. So I want to thank you both for your work. The second one's a funny story that happened to me three days ago. I won't mention the name and I won't mention the town, but the person said to me, Bob, you're, you're the school district moderator. Do you run the school board? And I said, wow, I didn't know I had that responsibility. No, the moderator does not run the school board. The moderator strictly in this case, or the school district moderates, oversees the deliberative session, which we have each year, which you're at right now. I have no authority over John McCarthy. I have no authority over Ruben. I can just give him a dirty look, that's all. So at this particular point, there's no, is there any further business to come before the voting body? Ruben?
No further business, just that there, um, again, take the, the brochures out back. There is more information in those relative to the apportionment and the equalized valuation, tax rates and so forth. Um, and I want to thank you all tonight. Owen, I saw you there. Thank you and thank you for the work that you're doing right now. We have students who want to join and work together to build some intergenerational, um, community throughout our, our towns. And I'm excited to see what's going to happen.
Before I accept the motion to adjourn, just like to ask, how many in our audience tonight are educators for our school district? Please raise your hand. I would be honored if, I would be honored if one of you would make the motion to adjourn our deliberative session. Who would like the honor? I see somebody pointing with their, Susan? Susan Thayer says, made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second? All those in favor signify so by saying aye? And opposed? That's adjourned, being adjourned.